All right, are we ready? Okay, let's all stand, give the pledge, Kim will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kim, an excellent rendition. Welcome back to the Phillips Town Planning Board, our usual Thursday, third Thursday of the month at 7:30. I apologize that we have gone back in time a little bit, returning to Zoom. It is not the method of engagement that we all had wished for, but this, this disease, this virus is pernicious and it is unpredictable. I would ask you, I don't think it's a political statement to say, please get yourself vaccinated if you haven't been. That is the, that's the right thing to do, it's the neighborly thing to do. And if the more you can get vaccinated, the more we can get back to in-person business. All right, Cheryl, the roll call, please.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon. Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
And Neil Zuckerman.
Here, thank you, Cheryl. All right, we have a quorum. Can I get approval of the minutes from July's meeting, please? Can someone move the approval of the minutes, please?
I'll move.
Thank you, Kim. Laura, second, any comments, sentences, corrections, et cetera? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed extensions. Okay, we have some correspondence to attend to. First, the Cummings request for escrow return. Steve or Ron, any commentary on that?
We do not have any outstanding bills.
Neither do we.
Cheryl, I guess, well, actually, let me get a motion then to return the escrow.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second, Neil Toman, thank you. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed extensions. Okay, shall we directly return that escrow, please, as appropriate? Secondly, we received a letter from Glenn Watson. And I only will ever be able to remove the linkage between Glenn Watson and COVID again, so. That's unfortunate, never had a think of those two in the same, but now, not only, yeah, so that's a problem. Anyway, CRS, they've asked for a six-month extension. Maybe, Steve, could you explain the extension of what? What are we extending here?
This is site plan approval. The rule under the code is that if you don't get to your building permit within two years after granting a site plan approval, you can apply to the planning board for two six-month extensions. The first one is granted for the asking, the second one you have to show good cause for. I'm not sure that CRS has been out two years, but if that's what the applicant represents.
It is not, Steve, it's dated January 21st of this calendar year.
Well, then you're gonna have to ask the applicant why they, they're looking for an extension here.
Cheryl, is Glenn on the call?
All right, one sec. Just moving him over.
Got it. Glenn, can you hear us?
Now I can, yes, I'm with you.
Great. Glenn, could you just provide a little guidance since it's not been nine months since CRS was approved? What's the request for the extension, please?
Well, frankly, all of the processes are slowed down. We are still working on the DOT permit and we're still working on the Health Department permit, but we're, we expect them to come in now.
But if Steve is correct and you have a two-year window, why are we doing an extension at this point?
I think the first, the initial approval is good for six months.
I thought you had two years on site plan, once you got your approval to get a building permit. Is that what we're looking at, or you got conditional?
I think there was a, I think that if you look at the, we were unsure when we read the resolution, how that, how that approval goes.
Glenn, I'll just read it out loud. It says, "The site plan approval shall," I mean, reading the last point on page three, item number nine. It says, "This site plan approval shall expire, blah, 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 or fails to initiate the use within 24 months of its issuance."
I, I'm aware of that, but if you read the first paragraph, I don't have it in front of me. But if you read the first paragraph, it says that we have to apply within six months. And it's, it is, there was something that we have to apply for in six months, which is a condition.
Okay, page, paragraph eight states pursuant to Code 17568, "Within six months after receiving approval, the applicant shall submit multiple copies of the site plan for stamping and signing."
So, we can't submit that because within that period of time, obviously, that's yes, but we can't submit that within that time because of the reasons I told you. This is the Health Department, because of getting through those two approval processes.
And that's, that's the, that's the portion of the ordinance that he's responding to. He has six months from the date of the approval to present the plan for execution and filing, and that's not been done.
So it's not a question of the plan expiring because he didn't get a building permit. It's a question of not getting it signed in the first place.
Right, it's not signed.
Again, then, they get two six-months approval to extensions. The first one for the asking, the second one for good cause, same role.
So, if I, I'm sorry, going to be a stickler, but the six-month mark was, I guess, July 21st, when we passed our, passed our last meeting, is what you're saying. I can't remember the date of the last meeting.
Yeah, you met in July. You're, you're correct, and the only thing I can blame on that is my partial disassociation with, with running herd on these things.
Understood.
Well, Neil, the, the rule, if it, there's two different rules. The first rule is, if you don't get your building permit, within the 24 months, your site plan expires, okay? We're not talking about that rule. We're talking about not submitting the site plan. If you don't submit the site plan within the six months, you can still come in within that second six-month period and say, granted, it's called non-pro-ta, we've done it before. So it just means, it, it, it's backdated to the original six-month period. You don't get more time in addition to that. So even if the six months has expired, you can still give them another six months.
Okay, Steve, you're, you're okay with this, this is legally sufficient for us to do this if we choose to?
All right, you have to do this to get the first one for, for the asking.
Okay. All right, well, then, I think we'll just make a motion to grant a, I guess, a second six-month extension if the first one is.
No, no, it's the first six-month extension. This is the, the, after this, they have to show good cause, but the first one they get for the asking.
Okay, can I have a motion then to extend, to provide that first six-month extension? Thank you, Kim. Second.
Sorry, good.
And Laura, thank you. Any discussion? Anyone? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed extensions. Okay, Glenn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll just stay on, though, because maybe we've got a question on Magazzino for the, for request for first 90-day extension.
It's, it's not 90, it's six months. It says 90 in the, in the, the, the tagline, but when you read the first paragraph, they ask for six months.
Boy, things are flipping after someone retired.
Yeah. You bet. Well, my basic reason, my basic reasons are the same. We've been, we've been dealing with Magazzino. Magazzino is actually a little more complicated because they have a, they have a public water supply and it has to go through the DEC as well as the normal channel. So that's, we're, again, we're on the cusp of this thing.
Glenn, is this for submitting it for signature, or is this, we're looking at the two years without a?
We're looking at the, we have the same six-month application for signature, that's the same thing.
All right, so it's the same thing as, as CRS.
Can I just ask a question? What public water supply do they have?
Well, there are conditions when a private piece of property, like when you own a restaurant, there's a cafe in there, and that water is consumed by the public.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion to provide this, the six-month extension?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second, Kim, any discussion, any other questions? No one? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed extensions. I mean, abstentions, excuse me. All right, thank you very much. All right, Glenn, that's.
Thank you.
No, no problem. I'm gonna skip over what says in our agenda is the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival letters, because we'll, we'll cover or not them in the later on. There are two letters that did come in, one from Joe Reckley. I think we actually got a printout of his publicly issued letter in the PCNR, and we also received a letter from Apprentice in support of the event. But I'd like to jump to the Reed letter from Billy Reed, laid to a daycare preschool that's supposedly operating in 75 Ocolo. Did anyone get a chance to read this memo? Okay, I have asked Greg Warner to take a look at it, and the town board has been made informed of it, given the number of parts that could be relevant for it. Any questions or comments on this? All right, well, we'll see if that's anything we have to deal with. And Bob, you know, as it's in front of the town board, you've got anything to share with us that we have to take action on? Please let us know.
Sure, we'll, you know, you know, Greg's supposed to take a look into this, as you indicated.
Good, thank you. And as I've said before, I think, I can't remember who was on one of our previous board meetings, you know, if board members hear things from neighbors, please do bring them up. You, you're, you provide a useful set of eyes and ears for the town. Okay, let's move into our first of our two public hearings. We'll do, we'll cover River View. Cheryl, maybe you can do the agreed versions, and this is a continuation of the public hearing.
Or, okay. River View Industries, 3012 Route 9, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, tax map number 27 dot 20 dash 1 dash 28. Applicant is seeking major site plan approval for a parking area for commercial truck parking and storage. The applicant owns and operates a commercial truck repair and auto body business on two parcels located across Route 9, and this is an extension of that use. A wetland permit will be required for disturbance in the 100-foot local wetland buffer. A floodplain development permit will be required for the disturbance in the 100-year floodplain.
And as you recall, we, I think we missed the noticing of the signage by something like a day or something, so we had to keep the hearing open. So Cheryl, any members of the public that wish to speak on this?
Please raise your hand if you would like to speak. I don't see any hands at the moment.
And let's allow, as Ron is saying, Adam, sorry, thank you, Adam. Okay, any members of the public? No?
No.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like a motion then. I mean, Adam, do you want to say anything, or can I go ahead and close, or ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm Mr. Chairman, I'm on for 3622 Route 9.
Oh, sorry, apologies.
Sorry, it's gone.
Thank you. Glenn, anything you want to say before we close the, I take a motion to close the public hearing?
I've, been no changes. We've made some progress with DOT in terms of the site, in terms of the, the highway entry permit. We're wrestling with one issue with them, but I think we'll, we're, we'll get through that. Other than that, we did post the sign, and we did provide the photograph, and the photograph was up there on Monday morning still, so, I mean, the sign was up there on Monday morning. So I have, be happy to answer any questions, if I may, if I'm able.
Let's, let's close, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. First, can I have that from a board member, please?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Neil. Second.
I'm sorry, Neil, did you invite the public? You invited the public on the, on the wrong, on the, before?
No, River View, with Cheryl, Cheryl read River View correctly.
Okay.
Can I get a second, please? No second? Okay, any discussion about whether we close the public hearing?
I think we can close the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed extensions. Okay, the public hearing is closed, thank you for that. Okay, so we're, Steve and Ron, what's your update on what we've got to do at this point on River View, please?
I think we have to close out, seek review to the extent of finishing off part two of the EAF, and then after that, if the board is inclined to, to, you know, direct Ron to prepare resolutions for next month, that's where you go.
Okay, so we've discussed the EAF part two in various settings and diverse pieces. I'm, I'm open to either starting, I'm asking for a motion to accept the EAF part two or, or engage in a conversation about before that. Any thoughts people would like to share? I know that we have had several discussions about the traffic in and out and about the environmental effects. We've thoroughly gotten word back from Max Garfick on the Conservation Board that they're comfortable with the moves that have been made. I don't know, board members have other questions or comments they'd like to raise related to this property. Let's go, Laura first, then Heidi.
So two things. One is, I think I mentioned that the EAF wasn't fully filled out, so, part two, at our last meeting when we were in person. So I thought that that was gonna happen and then be resubmitted. And then the second thing is, is that I don't think we ever really addressed the maneuverability of like how trucks were going to move from the parking side over to the, I guess, the, the store side of where the, the trucks were actually going to be worked on. You know, I know it's not part of the DOT traffic study, but I thought we had requested some sort of traffic plan, whether they were going to, you know, propose to have flagmen or like, or some sort of proposal on how they were gonna manage traffic and move the trucks from one side to the other across Route 9.
I think you're right, and I think we didn't, we didn't submit that. We'll, we'll submit, we'll submit that for this, for October.
Right, thanks.
I think, I think Laura's asking for two pieces. One is the resubmission, the EAF. I mean, are you, are you also suggesting, Glenn, you can submit also a viewpoint about how the movement will occur between the two areas?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Lauren, good? All right, Heidi, please.
Well, I think I've already expressed my view that because this site was in violation, it would, I think it would just make a lot more sense for the applicant to clean the site up before we pass on it. But I, I guess that isn't, my understanding is, I guess we don't have the, the ability to require that. It seems very counterintuitive to me, but I'm just putting that on the record again. I've already said it. I don't, I think it did not get any traction.
Well, I mean, Steve, would you like to respond to Heidi about her, her request or her perspective?
Well, there's two at least different issues here. The, the first issue is if someone has open violations that they can remedy without getting relief from the planning board, then you can require them to remedy those violations before granting them any approvals. You don't have to grant approval if there's an open violation, you can say, you have to fix that. However, and as I believe is the case is here, if there's violation or something that's not in compliance and they need relief from the planning board, they can't fix it until the planning board rules on it. So you kind of have to rule on it before, you know, they, they can fix the violation. And the third is something that isn't technically a violation of the code at all. It's just something that, you know, you feel is unsightly or unsafe or whatever it may be, and you can say, gee, we would like you to, you know, I don't know, cut down the weeds from the trees, whatever it may be, plants and plantings beforehand. You have no authority to require that before. If it's not a violation, it just doesn't enter into it.
I understand. I, I just wanted, I, I know when we, we're gonna vote on this, and my vote won't have anything to do with the fact that this is a horribly unsightly property, and I think that they could have cleaned it up. I mean, there's nothing to prevent them from trying to improve the appearance of the site. That's, seems to me patently clear. They could, they could take the publicly-minded step of improving the appearance of the site before the planning board has to vote on approving it. I mean, that just seems community-minded to me. That's my two cents.
All right, but keep in mind that your code specifically says, when amended site plan is sought, your review is limited to the amended.
Yeah, I, I, I took that in, information in, just, so, I guess it's a, out, outside the technical requirements of the plan. Yeah, understood.
Somehow, Heidi, you come, a joke comes to mind, a Woody Allen joke, which I don't know why it does, but it's that old line about, you know, the food wasn't so good in such small portions. I don't know why that comes to mind.
I'm not sure either.
I just came right to mind.
Anyway.
All right, okay, so I think we'll then have to push this to October to get the revised EAF and for that plan for Laura's comfort and clarity. Other thoughts, other questions?
No, I, I think Laura covered it.
Good, thank you. All right, let's move on to, thank you, Glenn. Let's move on to 3622 Route 9.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. And we have a, another continued public hearing. Cheryl, highlights from Hamlet version, please.
Okay, 3622 Route 9 LLC, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, tax map number 17 dot dash 1 dash 44. Applicant seeks site plan approval to remove an existing approximately 2,000-square-foot structure and 325-square-foot accessory structure and to construct two new buildings, 11,620 square feet and 10,500 square feet to house contractor offices and storage.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, Adam, if anything you want to say on the behalf of the applicant before we turn to the public?
Yeah, I would, I would just point out, I don't need to run through the whole history, but really just updates from when we met back in July, and that is really just simply that we've added a couple of notes to, to the site plan indicating that the parking in front of Building 1 will be strictly for passenger-grade vehicles. Any trucks that may be brought in by potential tenants would be kept behind Building 1, and any machinery that may be associated with any of the tenants would be stored within the designated storage areas, not in the parking area. So there, there was some commentary about, or concerns about overnight parking of such vehicles, and just wanted to clear that up. Otherwise, we're, we're in the same place we were back in July.
Cheryl, maybe a member of the public would like to speak?
Not at the moment.
Let's wait a moment to let the public see if they would like to say something. Okay. Going once. Going twice. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing in 3622 Route 9, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second. Thank you, Neil Toman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oh, Patty, but Kim?
I was just waiting to see if anybody else had anything to say. I have two questions. Maybe more than two. So I just want to make sure this drainage plan is okay with Ron? Because there's still the question of flow that exceeds.
And now, we, we've resolved all drainage issues.
Okay. So. The, well, okay, so the control of the trucks entering and exiting the property. There's gonna be one driveway for trucks and the other driveway for cars, right about that?
We've not, we've not codified that in the plan, but.
That was suggested at the last session.
Certainly, the, 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 the natural flow of the site is gonna lend itself to trucks wanting to go through that main driveway that makes the straight shot to the rear of the property. And given that the parking in the front, which is really the, you know, what's gonna have access to the, the northerly driveway, would naturally be pretty well restricted to passenger-grade vehicles. We haven't, we haven't put that into the, into the plan. If that was something that the board was insistent on, that it needed to be included with a sign or, or some other way, that's certainly something that we could look at.
It seems to me that if, if that is the intention, you know, if that's the assumption. I don't think you can assume that drivers know what they're doing when they're confronted with driveways that go to the closest one, whether it's got trucks in it or not. So, you know, if that, I'm kind of asking this question, Ron, if that makes sense for safety, then I think it would probably be a good idea to have sign.
Note clearly the applicant's intent. If it's something the board wants to make clear, we can always have some posting on that northerly drive to make it obvious that it's for passenger vehicles only.
I, I don't, I don't think the applicant would have any problem with that. We could, we could certainly include that.
Okay. And I guess what I'd like to know is, will there be guidelines for the tenants? Since, you know, often when we're doing this, there's an owner and the owner knows rules, but you're gonna have a bunch of tenants in there. So are you gonna, it would be good if the owner could provide the tenants with rules about how traffic is stopped?
Yeah, certainly, you know, the owner is gonna be held to what's set forth in the site plan, and so any lease would be inclusive of the fact that a tenant would have to abide by what is required.
Right, just, just wanna make sure the tenants are actually informed of what it is, because you can say they're supposed to abide by the, you have to give them.
Of course, that, that would, that would be included in any, in any lease agreement that might be.
You'd be willing to put a provision in your lease agreement, say, referring them to the, the traffic restrictions in the site plan?
I, I'd have to run it by the applicant, but I don't see why that would be a problem, obviously. You know, we need to abide by the site.
If you could get back to the board on that, it'd be easy enough to add a note to the site plan.
Okay.
Okay, and then I just want to make one comment. You know, in our zoning, it talks about trees that are, that are over eight inches, that at breast height, and being cut, and that's. There are 16 trees on this site that are 18 inches and over that are being cut. Now, I counted, and they're, and under your plan, there are 93 new evergreens coming in. So. If that's, if I counted correctly. So perhaps that mitigates, but I just, you know, want everybody to be aware of that. You know, we're agreeing to a great deal. Of large tree. So it's just a comment.
Yeah, and, and certainly, that's, that's, you know, that's obviously something that we're sensitive to, and I think we've spoken in, in the past with regard to the, the nature of a lot of the trees. We have a lot of Norway maple and, and the like, you know, more invasive type, type trees, especially in the, I want to say, in the southeast part of the property. We've obviously made changes to the site plan that have allowed us to keep some of the white pines and some of the other trees that have been noted. But the proposed planting is a completely native palette of plants that I think will serve well ecologically and, you know, over time will serve greater ecological services than, potentially than some of the invasives that are in there now.
Kim, other questions? I think we still have a motion out there to close the public hearing. I think I got a second, a movement and a second, and then we didn't vote on it. So can I have that? Vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extensions, okay, so the public hearing is closed. Now, as I'm saying, Kim has asked some very thoughtful questions. Other questions of the board of the, Heidi, please, go ahead.
Just a real quick question. So I, it was, it was terrific, Adam, that you decided to change the plan to save those big trees on the south side. How are you gonna make sure that they don't somehow calm down anyway? Like, how, how does one make sure that those big trees on the south side do actually survive the construction?
Yeah, so, so there'll be, there'll be clearly delineated limits of disturbance for, you know, where disturbance can happen on the site. Yeah, so so there'll be there'll be clearly delineated limits of disturbance for, you know, where disturbance can happen on the site. Um, and that should, you know, we'll have, you know, we'll have we'll have those limits visible on site for the contractor, you know, so that they're not accidentally hitting a tree or, you know, the like.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, Ron and Steve.
Neil.
Yeah, please go ahead. Go, Dan.
I had. I had read someplace I was looking for my notes. That there was a revised rendering showing the new screening of the front of the building. And I didn't see that in the package. Has that been submitted?
That was probably submitted back in June. I could bring it up on the screen if you'd like to see it.
Um, I I wouldn't mind seeing it. Supposedly it makes a dramatic difference of what we were looking at originally.
Sure, um, one second. Just jump.
Thank you.
So the the core difference, if I remember correctly, I I believe I I believe it was these evergreens in here that were not present in the initial rendering. The that the board had requested that we look for, you know, any other opportunities to to screen it from the. From the frontage. And again, you know, the these plantings need room to grow into themselves. So we can't plant every square foot along the frontage to start, but we did find some room to add some additional evergreen trees, I believe, in here. From what was originally submitted.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ron or Steve, Ryan and Steve, you want to give a comment on where we are at this point, please?
Again, it's a matter just to. Close the public hearing, which obviously has been extended for the sign issue. And then if the board is so disposed, you can seek to have resolution prepared for the next meeting.
I I think we we have closed the public hearing, so that's good. So. I think we are at that stage to do that. Steve, any comments, please?
I think Ron hit the nail on the head. If you, you know, if you're prepared to take action and and, you know, close that secret review. That's, you know, can be done for next month.
So is any other comments on the the EAF that we can close that secret? I mean, we we should build it. Accept the secret, the part two, and go ahead and issue a negative deck when we're. When we do our resolutions. So anything else? Any comments to make, board members? So then so then Steve, let's just walk through what we need to direct the have the board direct Ron to do then, please?
Direct him to have a secret resolution and approval resolution ready for next month.
Okay, so I I just want to make one comment before we go in because I do think that's the right path for us to go on, but I do. I do have a comment. And I want to build on the individual comments of some of our fellow board members of the last. At least a year or so. In this corridor of Route Nine, which is not a large portion of, I mean, so it's not a wide portion of Route Nine. We are now, after a number of transactions, we're doing either reinforcing what already exists in the case of. Riverview or creating a new in CRS or thirty six twenty two, creating large, physical, multi truck. Pretty significant change in the physical volume of our our road. And each individual. Traffic study done says that Route Nine can accept this. And we have sent a letter, I think, Steve, you drafted it to the board, the town board, to say that we are starting to get very concerned. Because I think we are, we would be on shaky ground if we started saying no to things, because these are allowed in our town. Um, and yet. When you take a number of items together, the sum total is, I mean, Mr. Mr. Thyberg's building here, it's not a small building. It's not an insignificant large sized building at near the entrance to Phillips Town. And these are going to start changing the character of Route Nine, and Heidi was very vocal and thoughtfully so when we talked about CRS. And its traffic. And so I I don't know what degrees of freedom we have for the next application that comes in front that will. Invariably ask for a larger and more substantial operation on Route Nine. But I, for one, am getting concerned about these, and I'm not commenting, Mr. Thyberg, on your individual property. I'm commenting on the sum total of the types of properties we're starting to see. They're going to change the character of Route Nine, even though the spirit of it is obviously of the development that's envisioned. But adding it all together, one day you'll wake up like Rip Van Winkle style and say, what in God's name happened to Phillips Town? And that's what worries me. And I don't know if Steve, you have any comments for us about how to what we do for the next one? But I, for one, am getting concerned.
Well, the only thing I can tell you, Neil, is. Oh, go ahead, please.
Can I just pile onto that? It's it's not just Route Nine. Um, every every reconstructed building or site that's redeveloped. We're getting, you know, buildings that are, you know, the residential houses are. Two or three times as big. You know, if you look at Manatee, that what's coming up tonight. Off of nine D, you know, it's just everything. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, the residences, I don't have anything to say about. I mean, that's that's a separate issue in my mind. Certainly, they don't generate nearly as much traffic. Um, as the commercial ones do, but you've brought your concerns to the attention of the town board. The town board. I'm sure they'll talk to the DOT about it. Feels that the uses that are permitted along nine are generating too much traffic. They have a remedy in that they can change the zoning. To uses which don't lend themselves to so much by way of truck traffic or even vehicle trips. But um, it's really not a planning board issue. You you bring the concern to the permitting board and you apply the code. To the applications as they come along, really, other than to some extent secret review can look at cumulative impacts. Um, it's it's really a little beyond your purview.
Any other comments on this topic? And I'm sorry, it could come across as gratuitous. I hope it's not. Peter, go ahead, please.
I just want to second that and then second what Kim said. Route Nine is the natural corridor topographically, and so it's going to be a magnet for. Commercial development, and I also feel that. Zoning really needs to have a a close look at what what's going on. And so my two cents just wanted to say that I was. On board with that that close look. That's all.
I'm sure you know, Peter, the town's redoing its comp plan, and after the comp plan is redone, I expect there'll be some zoning changes. And perhaps this is something the town board will look at. I I don't know.
The Hollywood Square to your left, Steve, on my screen is Bob Flaherty. So without putting Bob in the spot, I just, Bob, you you've heard the sentiment of this board. Tonight and others, and we ask you to help convey that to our soon to be a new new town supervisor. Will be a fantastic town supervisor. But I really ask you to figure out how we can convey these messages because I think this is emerging to be a meaningful problem we're facing.
Yeah, no problem. Again, you know, we going through the comprehensive plan, updating it right now. We had a public hearing. Two so far, and to be quite honest, we really haven't had much public input. Unfortunately. Uh, we have some letters and so forth like that, but yeah, obviously, everyone's concerned about traffic on Route Nine. You know, I know many years ago, they set the change the setbacks from a hundred feet to like thirty five feet. Uh, so I guess the reason they were doing that is to prevent a four lane highway coming in on Route Nine through Phillips Town. Uh, definitely, everyone's aware of it, so you got our ear, no question about it.
And Neil, if I could add one more thing, just to jump back to the three, six, two, two route nine application. If Ron's going to prepare, I'm sure he is, an approval resolution, and the applicant is going to submit. Don't forget Kim's point about a note on the plan saying that tenants will have to abide by the traffic restrictions in the approved site. So the applicant should should include that in their submission, and Ron might want to have that in his approval resolution.
Well, those words can jumbo to be to Ron directly, and so I'll assume Ron heard that to add that to the plan.
It looks like he's paying attention.
No, that's correct. Yeah.
I'm sure he is. Ron, 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 Ron's a true professional. Okay, so can I have a motion to direct Ron to prepare a negative declaration for secret, please? Can I have a motion? Thank you, Kim. Kim, don't get frustrated. You're the first vice chair. We always look to you for the first. All right, a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in, I mean, is there any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed. And extensions. Okay, and then can director create the approval resolution for thirty six twenty two root nine? May I have a motion, please? Someone not Kim. Laura, thank you. Second, not Kim.
So moved.
Ah, thank you, Neil. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you very much, Adam. We'll. See you for the approvals next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. I see Chris. Uh, Chris, I don't know. I don't know if Aaron has joined with us. I can't remember if he was.
Aaron is joining us, yes. Cheryl could have him.
Great, there he is. Great, okay.
You know, thanks, Cheryl.
All right, Mr. Hollis, good to see you.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Davis. How are you? Okay. Chip and all. All right. Okay, thank you for your submission of your EAF part three and the the revised and coordinated outline. That was very helpful. Together. Um, I'm sure every member of the board used all sixty days since our last meeting to go through all thousand pages. I will ensure that they are quizzed on those citations throughout the next several conversations we have. Why don't we just ground ourselves? We'll start with. With with Ron and Steve about where we are in the process for the Shakespeare Festival, please?
You've received the EAF part three. Your consultants have reviewed it. They're prepared to go through it with you. If you're satisfied with the EAF part three. Hopefully, you'll be in a position to adopt it and adopt the negative declaration under secret. But there's a lot to cover in there. I would not want to jump the gun as to what your ultimate conclusion might be.
Right, thank you. Ron, any add?
No, that summarizes things.
Okay, so what we're going to start by doing in our, we're going to try and allocate this. Uh, an hour. And then we can discuss whether we'll have a dedicated meeting to cover this in more detail and and another at our next meeting. Maybe we do a separate meeting like you've done a couple of times already. Uh, to start going through in detail, but the theory tonight was that we would have. Uh, unless Dan, you or Jan or someone from your team wants to make any opening remarks. The thought would be to have Aaron and Chris from AKRF give us their viewpoint about the. If you will, the sufficiency of the part three and any meaningful things that either are omitted or need to be adjusted. Before the board the board launches in with your help and AKRF say section by section discussion. Of each of the major areas. So I'll I'll turn it over to Chris and Aaron. So let me pause. There's a Dan or Davis or anyone else from Shakespeare, Jan? Anybody want to make any introductory remarks?
No, I think that Steve and and Ron set the table for what has to happen next. I think your idea of a dedicated meeting. You know, maybe even before the October meeting, just to us to go through the the comments that. AKRF and Ron have put together, you know, most of them are ministerial in our view, and we don't have any dispute with them and the things that. Require a little more thought and conversation, both internally by our team and then with AKRF and your team, Mr. Chairman, I I think that would be. The top subject matter for that special meeting so that we can get through the secret process in a timely fashion. We're here to to discuss it after Aaron and 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 Chris go through their points and Ron. We have our entire team here to speak about or respond to any questions or comments they or you may have.
Okay, so let's do this. So as you know, the memo is coming both from AKRF and from Ron. So what we'll do is I'm going to just have them. Three of them walk through the substantive comments. I I think the administ trivia topics we will hold off. Unless board members think it is not administrative in nature. But why don't we have you from AKRF and Ron go through your memo, hit the highlights, points of things you saw or didn't see. As you believe are needed to help us make a determination because we will be looking at AKRF for an opinion about the the the. The.
Completeness?
Sorry.
Completeness?
Well, no, actually, I'm not saying it. We're going to have a completeness discussion now, but what what, once we have completeness. We will be looking for AKR for an opinion that actually about the impact as well. That's part of what they've done for. In our last major engagement with them and Hudson Holland Reserve will be asking for that again here. So we have a sufficiency or a completeness topic, and then we're going to have an opinion about impact topic. We will be tackling the former tonight. So Chris and Aaron and Ron, over to you. And and board members, feel free to stop at any time with any questions from what Aaron or Chris or Ron are raising, please. Or for that matter, frankly, the applicant, since it's for you as well, of course.
Hey, good evening. This is Aaron Warner from AKRF. I'll I'll lead this part. So we had a pretty lengthy comment memo like. The applicant indicated a lot of the stuff was, you know, administrative or ministerial or editorial in nature. What we've done is we've taken the highlights of what we think are the most critical items to address right now. Um, so that we can get to a point where we can. Either, you know, concur with what they're concluding or add some more thoughts, but right now we need more information on on the following items, and I'll just go through. The topic or the, you know, the the chapter title, and then I'll just I'll include comment numbers and I'll summarize. Um, what each one is saying, so the applicants where these are the ones that we want to make sure they hit on for revision. Um, does that sound good? Great, okay. So for project summary. Uh, section two, comment three, we just asked for a little bit more detail on the phasing. Um, especially phase one, which they described as the most known and, you know, near term build out that they have planned. There seems to be some discrepancy between the website for Shakespeare Festival and what the EAF is saying. Um, one indicates that the existing tent is going to move over. To the new site as part of phase one. Um, and then the parking lot will be constructed, etc. Another says that a new tent will be started, and the old one will be moved. So just clarify that. Um, and also, if it's possible to break down that twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. Initial phase one timeframe a little bit with. You know, how many months would it take for each thing to get to get completed, including the parking lot, the tent? And they also mentioned that the the. Traffic signal would happen in that phase two. So that's that's what that comment is covering. So we're looking for a response on that. Section three, land use and zoning and layout. Um, comments four and six are the two important ones. So comment four. Talks about the scenic protection overlay on page ten and eleven. Um, we're just asking for some more discussion about how this application complies with each of those standards for the scenic protection overlay. They list them, but they don't follow each with how the project is complying. They've done that for the other overlays, but they didn't seem to do it for that one. Um, page twelve is comment six on use and operations.
My my Aaron, just my advice, just slow down to drop. Because maybe pause after each one you hire, you you address, if any comments.
Got it. Is there anything on what I just said about? Okay. Uh, moving on then to comment six, which was under land use also page twelve, it covers. Um, it's about use and operations. We were just looking for more clarity on about the number of months out of the year that peak operations would be anticipated. Uh, once this site's fully built out. Um, since there is a long term plan that includes an indoor theater and other uses, right? Um, and how that compares to how many months out of the year it happens at Bosco Bell currently. Right now, the description seems to indicate that with the full build. Um, we're looking at operations from March through December, which would include some holiday programming is what they indicated. So. Uh, a little bit more detail about that. Is that registering?
Maybe, maybe it could be a little more specific. When you say more detail, like what kind of detail? Not to do their work for them, but what kind of details you're looking for? Because you don't want a bunch of adjectives thrown in. Like, what are you looking for?
Right, well, what's happening at Bosco Bell right now? How many months are we seeing a peak usage of the, of the facility there? How does that, how is that going to compare with the new operation, the full master plan they have? Right, it seems to indicate March through December is, which, you know, including theatrical season, including weddings, venues, or, you know, events, which don't happen at Bosco Bell right now, and it's more of a limited season. So just breaking down the difference and more, more clarity on that, that's all. Obviously, their traffic study looks at the full build, maximum occupancy, a lot of events happening at the same time, which is good and a conservative look. But, you know, the narrative in this land use section, we thought could use a little bit better of an explanation. Is that better? Okay, so there was some on vegetation and wildlife. I'm going to turn it over to Chris for these because that's his area of expertise. Chris, you want to take those?
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Evening all. Chris Robins, AKRF. Continuing on with Section Three, Vegetation and Wildlife. We had three comments that rose to more than sort of the administrative editorial type. First, our comment number fifteen, which is on Pages Forty-one and Forty-two. Your Table Eleven, thanks for updating that. It was really helpful to have the additional information that we had discussed previously. One comment on this, there is a column that provides description of ecological values, and those values are assigned to each of the management, each of the twelve management units. What we'd like is a description of how the values were assigned each of the management units and then, uh, you know, let us know sort of a description of each of those particular ecological values. It's just a, maybe a sentence or two in the, in the text as to, or it's a footnote to the table so we can understand better what it is that those, you know, what it is your, your intent were for the ecological values. Any questions on that? Okay, eighteen, Page Forty-six. Uh, this is under the proposed disturbance. There has been a little bit of discussion about sort of habitat and how this project will mainly fall within the bounds of the golf course itself. But wanted to make sure that if there was any sort of thoughts on the, on the habitat fragmentation that may occur resulting from this development proposal that that was captured here, and there really isn't anything there. And, and if it's, if it's, if it's non-existent, then let us know. So, you know, pretty, pretty straightforward. Do your experts expect that there's going to be some habitat fragmentation here based on sort of the layout of the, of the development? And if so, what would that look like? And if not, just please indicate that that's, that, that would be your conclusion. And yes.
Can I ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
Um, so I just was wondering, I guess it doesn't have to do necessarily with additional habitat fragmentation that might occur as a result of the project, but possibly related to that, but also the habitat fragmentation that already exists on the site and a possibility for correcting some of it perhaps during the course of the construction. I'm just wondering if it would be possible to, for the applicant to include some passageways for wildlife that would go under the roads. So as the roads are, you know, either rebuilt, redesigned on the site, and there's known places that, for example, amphibians cross those roads, whether it'd be possible to have like the, like what other folks have been doing, for example, at Fawnstock with the, where OSI has built the under road corridor for wildlife to pass through so the site isn't fragmented? I mean, it already is fragmented, but to sort of correct some of these things that have existed from the past perhaps and might even be like where there's more traffic, more cars, you know, the problem might be worsened more. You know, passing along the streets here and looking at all the squash turtles and frogs and salamanders that, you know, thirty-year-old salamanders have been squished by the cars, like that's part of life here, basically. So perhaps it could actually be fixed? Maybe it, as part of the project in a thoughtful way, I just, it's a thought. I, I'm not sure you have to do it, but just wondering if that's been considered here and there, like maybe especially at the bridge at Snake Hill Road, perhaps?
I can, I can comment on that. I can comment on the bridge if it's okay. That, that was, as you were talking, Heidi, that was, the bridge is what was coming to mind. And we had looked at a couple of different scenarios there with the new Snake Hill Road driveway. And that's going to be, right now, is being considered like a span bridge. And there was an option at one point to actually fill that area and have retaining walls on either side of the new driveway, which would result in fragmentation in that wetland corridor. So right now, we're proposing a span bridge. So you'd be able to walk right underneath it, wildlife, be able to go underneath the bridge. So, you know, I think that could probably be pointed out a little bit more in the text of the report. And I have a couple of other ideas on your, on your point, but it is something we're absolutely cognizant of and has been kind of implemented into the project, but I think I could probably bring it out a little bit more in text and highlight that for you.
Oh, excellent. That'd be great. Yeah, thank you. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thanks, Heidi. And Jan, right, I think take credit for all of, all of what you consider.
Yeah.
Put, put that in the documents, you know, it's a benefit that, you know, your, your design went through a number of iterations and, and each of those maybe had some consideration for, for, you know, preservation and enhancement of habitat. So whatever you've done would be great to put in the document.
Yeah, and where we don't need curbs on, on driveways, we're not going to curb the road so that it allows tools to pass. That type of thing's all been considered, but probably could be highlighted a little bit more, so it's available to you.
Okay, that sounds great. Anything else on, on that? Okay. Comment Twenty-three from Bedge and Wildlife, Page Fifty. There was some discussion about bog turtle. And this just asks whether or not the, the, the single area of potential habitat out there is hydrologically connected to other areas that may have potential habitat value for the bog turtle. And if that is the case, and I'm not, I'm not saying that it is or not, that'll be up to you all. If that is the case, provide a description of what that connection is and where those other habitats are. And then, you know, with regard to the impacts, discuss how that might be impacted with the development and operation of the project.
I think that one particular area is so far removed from our development. I think we'll be able to, to clarify that. And the, and the, the folks that did prepare are ecological assessment or kind of like bog turtle experts. So he did go out there and, and look at that particular wetlands, did not have any concerns. We can, we can kind of hit that a little bit harder, maybe, but it, it is an area that is nowhere near proposed development. It was on the other side of Snake Hill, Snake Hill Road, right? They have to travel like six hundred feet in elevation to get to the top of the hill where her development is, and there's absolutely no corridor potential for them to be impacted, but we'll, we'll address it.
Yeah, I think what you said, Jan, is exactly what I was looking for there, right? A little bit more details to sort of locations. Obviously, on the graphic where it is, can't really tell very easily without sort of looking carefully sort of what that elevation change is. And then, you know, if there is some potential for connectivity out there between habitats, yeah, let us know. If not, also let us know that.
Right, the only connectivity would be to, to wetlands that are going to be preserved in the, in the conservation parcels, right? So it all drains that way, that particular wetland. So it's, it's, it's all going to be part of the lands to be preserved.
All right, yes, all, I think adding that will, will adequately address the, the comment.
Gotcha.
Anything else on, on Comment Twenty-three? Okay, under Wetlands and Watercourses, Comment Forty, Ron, I think this came from you. Do you want to weigh in on the, on the existing dam comment?
Sure, there was, there was a discussion in the expanded EAF that an evaluation has been performed on the, on the dam, and they went to some brief discussion of what issues there were. However, the, I think we've been looking from the start to see the former report that would have been generated to evaluate that dam. That should be provided so that it can be reviewed by the project team from the town side. Understood?
Yeah, I don't think that'll be a problem. The report is, is now prepared and don't see an issue with that.
Sure. And then Comment Forty-one gets into the issue of stormwater management for the site. The expanded document makes references in various locations in terms of a stormwater pollution prevention plan that was developed that's intended to document the adequacy of the stormwater managed facilities that are planned to mitigate any stormwater impacts from the overall site development that's planned. However, the, there's a very abbreviated version of the SWIP contained in the expanded EAF. The only reference I could really make out was on an overall site plan to intend to identify some intended stormwater treatment devices. And what I'm looking for is just that the SWIP be expanded to the extent necessary that so that we can better understand the locations and sizing of the facilities that are planned. So we can merely confirm that there's sufficient areas that are available to provide the treatment devices that you intend.
We spoke about that this afternoon in the office. I spoke with Margaret about that. And the, there is a chart on the table, on the, on the plan associated with the report that does provide those the matchup of the volumes getting to the areas that were designated and that we think that works, but Margaret suggested that the, there is a form that I'm not personally familiar with that basically provides the calculations to get there more precisely than we did, and we'll fill out those calculations.
Sure, and we, we can beat offline directly to be sure that gets resolved.
Very good.
Okay.
Say, Ron, can I jump in on the, go back to the dams for a second?
Sure.
Have you, I, I, I looked. Have you been able to find whether this impoundment is classified with New York State Dams? I was unable to find it listed, and I think that it's important because we need to know whether it's a Class A, B, probably an A, but.
It is not, it is not registered. That, there's been ongoing discussions with that. I'm sure that that's in the report and we are one way or the other, depending on what goes on with it. Ultimately, it will be registered.
Yeah, again, that should be, that should be covered in the evaluation that was performed by your subconsultant.
Yeah, the, the EAF does identify that it's unclassified at the time. It wasn't on the DC's radar. Although it, it will be, and they've even corresponded with us since the secret process started. But there's a, there's a process to get a dam classified, and it's not a short one, so.
You're, well, I bring it up because you're going to, not only you're going to have the classification, the classification is going to require an engineer's assessment, which can be a a process in and of itself. My, again, my guess is this would be classified as a Class A, but still it takes time and.
We've, we've started the process and we can provide that information to you.
Yeah, because the remedy depends on the classification. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Moving on. Um, we're going to move on to utilities now. Comments Forty-three and Forty-five. And let me just preface this, for utilities, traffic, noise, and the human health analyses, we have some in-house experts that weighed in on all this. They're not on the call today. But we offer to have a phone call or a meeting with the applicant team between now and the next meeting with those folks on to talk through some of these if they want. So I'll just, you know, just, I just want to let all know that I'm not an expert in some of the traffic comments. I don't think Alex was able to make it from our group to join this. So I'm not going to go one by one on all of them, but I'm just going to, you know, explain our position. But first, let me go back to utilities. Specifically, the groundwater recharge and water supply. So we, our, our group looked at that. We're generally okay with the water budget that was provided. There just seems to be a concern about testing, pump testing, and whether that's planned now or if we can get the, the assurance that it's going to be happening as part of the Putnam County permitting process, because that's really going to help see that this can all work.
So we, the applicant would certainly comply with any requirements that the Department of Health would have regarding the future wells and the overall groundwater withdrawal for the proposed action. And we will be coordinating more closely with the Department of Health to get their recommendations regarding any, any testing that will be required of the applicant in the future.
And if you want to have, you know, we have a separate meeting, Brian, who you've talked to before, you know, who's covering this topic as well as the, in Phase Two, and he'd be happy to talk through it with you a little bit more. So I'll move on to traffic unless anyone else has questions on that. So for the traffic study, this was our first look at the full revision. A lot of comments were addressed previously, but there's about nine comments in the memo and we, you know, this is our latest substantive review. And responses are necessary for all of these to, so that we can adequately draw to conclusions. And again, we're open to setting up a call with our traffic team, Anthony Russo and Alex, all have been looking at this. And John Canning from Timely Horn can join, and we'll, we can walk through them all and have a good discussion about those to, to get those addressed. Questions?
Are you going through them?
I wasn't planning to walk through each one since I'm, you know, I'm not really the expert on, on what all those different data points and, and technical aspects deal with. We have, like I said, we have experts that do that. But if, you know, if the applicant has looked at those and is, is totally concerned with what we're saying right now, we could make a note of that, but, you know, like I said, we're prepared to have a separate discussion. Like we've done before.
This is Mr. Canning. We've reviewed the comments. We're not particularly concerned about them, but we will discuss them with Aaron and his team. We'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have at an appropriate time.
So I, John, I, I have a couple of comments, and I have been, I hopefully, very consistent in raising that the volume of traffic on this site is my primary concern.
Yep.
And to quote my fellow Neil, too much, too big, too much going on. I mean, I think I'm butchering your trifecta, Neil Toman, but when I read the, the report and your summary, or your summary first and then the detailed report, I did not find a simple conveyance of the following information. I am looking for the total human beings that are going to be across all the uses, not just what's beyond the PDD, but what is total cumulative human beings? How it translates into how many cars and therefore what is the conversion rate you're using? I have stated very clearly that I disagree with what I back into a two-point whatever per people per car. My assessment from just Googleation is that one point seven is more appropriate, but there is no explanation or explicit citation of the number of people per car. And I would like to see that total volume of people and therefore vehicles tied to that choice. And it could be a range you could show us at two point two, here's how many cars, and at one point seven, it's X number of cars. But it has to be the absolute total volume of human beings. And I can't find that in the summary table. I can't, I, there are lots of different charts that break it up in different pieces, but I'm looking forward to understand the. The absolute magnitude of impact on this property. I agree with a lot of the comments that it is a great usage of the space. Not a comment about a pro or a con, it's about magnitude. And I'm trying to understand across all the uses, the restaurant, the hotel. The banquet slash weddings and indoor and an outdoor and people frolicking in other parts. I want to know the total volume.
Okay.
And that to me is not obvious in the material.
We, we want to prepare a supplemental memo just to address that topic so that we can bring all of the. Important information clearly upfront so that you can see it and put two and two together. So thank you.
Thank you, John. That, that any other comment, and Laura, go ahead.
Yeah, so let me, so maybe this will help. Because we did make a comment regarding, I don't remember who it was about, because I think Aaron from AKRF said that what's missing is. More or less an understanding of what the ultimate programming is for the space. So if you can actually create a schedule and a matrix of the program, so the total use of across like a calendar year. On, on top of that, understanding total use and the total population. And if you overlay that, because I think it's all directly connected, right? So if you're March to October or March to January, right, there's ebbs and flows.
Yep.
Of traffic and population and then you can overlay that and then map out your traffic and your, you know, and the total occupancy on the site.
So if I can offer the following suggestion, what I'd like to do is pretty much what you've asked, but we'd like to focus in detail on the busiest. And establish the absolute maximum. And then we can provide you a schedule, you know, a month by month schedule as to what we would expect an average and a busiest day to be. And then we can do sort of a sliding scale calculation of the, because I don't want to do for every month. Even the slower months, a detailed calculation of all of the activities. Because it's just, you know, it's exhaustive. And if we can give you an indication of what's on the slower months, but go into the detail on the busier month, I think it would be more. Productive from our perspective, if that's okay with you.
So I would agree with you, except for the fact that if I understand the total use and the total ultimate conceptual plan of how it's going to be used. There's ebbs and flows.
Yes.
So the theater may be in high season, right? And then the other areas may not.
Yeah.
When the season, when the theater season is down and dark, the other seasons are high and up. So like, that's what we need to understand is that overlay and how those undulating peaks actually all get integrated. And I think the ebbs and flows are actually going to be, is going to show that it's going to actually be. Much more used than what we're thinking about.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay. All right. I think, and I'm, I'm looking to my team and see if we have some nodding heads that they understand what we're trying to do here, right? I see.
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Laura.
Can I ask a quick question along the same lines?
Yes, of course.
Wouldn't, since the site's going to be built in phases. If it gets approved.
Yeah.
Be possible also to, if for example, there is more use than is, than you're projecting at this point. Wouldn't it be possible to. Reassess before additional uses come into place, before the construction has begun for additional uses on the site? So that if it's already sort of overwhelmed after phase one or phase one and a half. There could be a reassessment of, you know, what additional uses are actually manageable on the site? I mean, is that a possibility or does the whole thing have to, does it only work economically if it's all one package?
Well, typically what would happen for an application like this would be that you would do. An evaluation at a key or at tier phases, assess. How it's developing as compared to what was projected. And if everything's fine, everything's fine. And if it seems to be doing more than was expected. Then you could ask the applicants to identify additional measures that could be implemented to address. Certain concerns. So for example. If there was more traffic than was expected, then the applicant could be asked to identify measures to reduce traffic such as requiring. People who have weddings on the same day as performances to come by bus as opposed to when, when they're booking it, they're told that we're, we're gonna have a busy day that day. If you want to book it, you gotta bring your guests by bus, stuff like that. But it's, it's something that has been done for other big projects where you do an evaluation at phase one. And then you make modifications if, if needed. And by the way, the, the. Event, traffic and parking management plan basically requires the applicant to do that anyway. It requires them to constantly monitor what is happening and to make adjustments on both a, a daily, a weekly. And an annual basis to their plan to make sure that it stays in line with what's projected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Neil, can I jump in with one more?
Yep, go Neil. And by the way, why don't you just recap that phrase of yours? Because I obviously butchered it earlier.
Oh, what was it? I don't know if I could do it.
Well, I think you were quoting Nat Prentice, so I.
I don't know who, who gets. Don't big, the, the comprehensive plan says, don't build anything that's too big, too ugly or too dumb. I think that's what the.
I don't remember the dumb part. That's not what I remember. All right, keep going, Neil, keep going.
So we've got the, I'm glad that we're getting some threshold questions out there because I've been, I've been looking for plans for. These buildings. So we have the, we have the hotel, we have the artist quarters and I'm not seeing it in, in, in the plan. So. You know, that this goes back to, you could find it in Town Law. Town Law comes from the state, section two seventy-four A, references you back to our local code of one, seven, five, six, five. Section B, five and sixteen, calling for the application to have. Plans for the buildings, elevations, sides, show us what you're gonna build. And I'm not seeing it in the. Let's see, I'm not seeing it in the application and we're, we're getting up, we're getting along in this process and we still don't actually have any plan. So I guess this goes back to our question about the completeness of the, of the application. So Glenn or anybody, do we have any plans? Do we have any, are there any drawings in our future?
I don't think there's any. I, I think it's the. Our understanding that that level of detail wouldn't be required for a secret process. But maybe required for a site plan process when we come back to you after secrets complete. The, the EAF scope outline didn't require that level of detail. These buildings have not been designed. They've been conceptualized. We know their, their bulk and we know we've provided photographs and perspectives of, of buildings that we. Anticipate to model them after in the future, but they simply just haven't been designed. There's not an architect on board to, to draft them.
But it calls, it calls for it in the code. It calls for your application to be complete that these elements and I'll, I'll send you the, you know, I.
I mean, we would.
It calls for that to be in the, in the application and. Getting out over our skis a little bit if we don't have that information.
Again, I would expect that you will have that before you sign a site plan. But that's not typical, my experience of. A seeker review of a, a project that's going to be phased over fifteen years, some of these buildings, we don't.
That's the other thing is that the, the codes don't require us to see everything that's happening in fifteen-year intervals. It only requires that we look. At five-year intervals. So, you know, if you could send me everything you got that you're gonna be doing in the first five years, I think that would satisfy the board. Because we're not seeing that incremental, you know, that's, that's why it's designed that way so that we don't keep coming and seeing you over and over and over. It's that we want to see five years of what you're gonna build. And I, I think the code's pretty clear that we need to. For this site plan application to be complete, we need to see some drawings of what, of what you want to build.
Yeah, but we're, we're not at the site plan.
Yeah, the site plan, site plan is, and the secret process are distinct at the moment and the. Steve Gaba, I'll defer to you, but I'm not.
No, you're saying to be preach on, brother, preach on.
No, that's fine. I made my point.
Okay. What I was gonna say, Neil, is look, I want you to have, you know, what it is you, you think you need in order to process this application. I think it's important to understand this project requires zoning change. And they're going to be going to the town board for that. They don't have the zoning in place to do. Anything as far as getting approvals from this board yet. What you're doing at this point is getting through secret review. So the town board can decide if they're gonna get the zoning change they need in order for the project to go forward. Once that's done, they're gonna come back to you for the site plan. And at that point, it would be absolutely appropriate for you to say, look, I need to see renderings. At this point, I don't know, maybe you can give some conceptual renderings, just generally, this is the type of building that we envision going there. We, we call it cartoons sometimes.
Yeah, we've done that.
So I mean, you know, I, I think the application is, is complete enough to be processed through secret review certainly at, at this point. And Neil, you're gonna, you're gonna get what you want at the end. I'm telling you, when the application comes for approval to the planning board, you'll certainly have the degree of detail that you're looking for, but. At this point, I, I think the applicant's, I think the applicant's correct. It would be premature. You can't ask them to. Design a building before they even know if they're gonna be able to apply for site plan approval.
So can I just chime in? I mean, so I agree with that, but at the same time, to Neil's point, I don't think there's anything wrong for us to ask the applicant. To conceptually create massing drawings, right? So we don't necessarily need to know the full design of anything. But what would be helpful is conceptually, we know what the volume of the building or whatever it will be, right? But I think it would be very helpful for us to see the volumetric element in its plan, just so that we understand placement, height. Location and adjacencies. And I think that would just be very helpful for us to then be able to conceptualize and understand what the overall plan looks like. Just so that we understand like how everything gets integrated and how all of these infrastructure elements are all interconnected. And that I don't think is outside of what we can ask for.
We are, we're working on the, the, for the town board amendment. We're working on the, excuse me, area location in bulk standards. And there'll be no buildings higher than three stories, but I'll let Laney McKinnon jump in on that at, just to give you a little comfort, Ms. O'Connell, on that point.
Right. So we did provide text in our description of the various buildings showing how we are under all of the regulations and the, the massing heights for the zoning of this area. And we've also provided some representative images of what, of the volumes of these buildings in our precedent images. And if you, and when you look at our section, and it's kind of in a, a couple of different places and you can look at the sections that we did as part of the analysis. For sightlines and that also shows some of these volumetric studies that you're asking about. So it's a little bit of a triangulation, but we do show. The volumes that we are all under code and what we're proposing and then where they, you know, kind of what our look and feel of each of the various pieces are in the application.
And Laney, we took it even a step further for the permanent tent, right? I mean, there's, there's models.
Yes.
And there's renderings of the tent. It's that, that went pretty specific because that, we know what that's gonna, gonna be.
Absolutely.
That the scope outline, you know, asked for descriptions of where the buildings are on the site relative to each other, how tall they are. What they would be likely looking like and that's what they prefer, those precedent images. And they've done that. We didn't have any comments on how they wrote that up. The visual, which I'll get to in a minute. Couple of the visual diagrams show, I think the, the year-round theater in one of the views from, from, I think it was from. From one of one through five, I believe there's a view of. It looks like a massing of, of the year-round theater from like a, between a, a couple of trees from a distance. So they've attempted to show that at the stage. Obviously, you're, you know, you can ask for whatever you want to look at at this point, but for what the scope asks for. We thought they, they provided that and that's the scope that the board had proved. So. That's one of that, that in.
Okay, all right, that, Aaron, back to you.
Okay, we actually, I, I think we do have Alex from AKRF in, that could be added to the meeting if he, if there are. Really concerns about the, the traffic comments, John, he can, he can weigh in now or we could just have a separate call, whatever you prefer. But if you're not concerned with those, we, you know, I'll move on to the next.
Aaron, are those comments you had indicated with the traffic comments, you'd hope that they would all be addressed. Now, or they're all significant? Is it the same for the air quality report?
For the, yeah, I was gonna touch on those next. So the air qualities, but John, did you have anything to add before?
No, unless the, the board has any questions of Alex, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. So for the air quality report, which is really a focus on mobile source air quality related to vehicles and it's tied to the traffic. We had comments, not all of them, but fifty-eight, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two. Sixty-three and sixty-four were what we've flagged as ones that we want to follow up about. Again, we have an air quality group that is very technical and reviewed that report that was provided, which was the first time we've seen it. So again, we'll, we'll be happy to get on the phone and talk about those. I'm not really prepared to walk through the technical aspects tonight. If you, again, if you have specific concerns, you want to relay those now, I'll write them down and we can follow up.
Aaron, can we just go over those numbers again?
Sure, fifty-eight, sixty. Sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three and sixty-four.
Great, thank you.
No problem. Okay, any, um, before I move on, any questions? Okay. So the next topic we had is visual and community character. Two comments there. So comment sixty-five, which is on page seventy-nine of the document. Scope called for leaf on and leaf off comparisons for the visual simulations. What we've seen from the submission is that they've provided that for the distant views, which are called viewpoints one through five. Which are from far away from trails and scenic roads, et cetera. And in some of those cases, the proposed buildings are shown, like, like I said, the permanent theater building is, appears to be in one of those as a massing sketch. Within the photograph, which is helpful. We're curious why that wasn't really followed for the closer in views, like view six through nine, which are all along Route nine, looking into the site. You know, I've driven by it a lot. I know there's a lot of trees along the edge there if, so if the applicant's making the argument that those, that screening that's there now is gonna stay or be enhanced. Therefore, it's not really, it doesn't make sense to have a leaf on, leaf off view because you're not gonna see anything in the sightlines that they did provide are what they preferred to show. Just let us know that definitively, maybe even, you know, show the leaf off photo, because right now there's leaf on photos, they're Google photos. You know, we're coming up on the fall now, you could have the opportunity to get out there and take some leaf off photographs with a camera, not Google. So just wondering if that's at all possible.
Sure, we can add some additional leaf off information. To include about the existing trees, any new ones that we're planting to provide the screening. So that's not a problem.
Okay, and that's, yeah, and that's comment, the next comment sixty-six is really getting to that, like if you are enhancing. That, you know, perimeter buffer with additional plantings, maybe berms, whatever you might be proposing. It's not clear from. From the document, what you're actually doing. You're saying you're gonna do it, but just maybe bullet points of what exactly you're proposing. Because if those are built into the project, you know, you're, you're by, as part of the project, you're attempting to eliminate or preclude any impacts at all. So that's important to know, you know, have all those details for the board now.
Okay, we will add that in, no problem.
Okay, I'll leave it open for anyone else to chime in before I move on. Okay. The next topic was noise and similarly highly technical. It was the first time we've seen the full report. The last time. The last meeting in July, we were told it was coming. We got it for the first time in September submission. We did have a call, a productive call with the noise consultant on the applicant side and our noise group, just to refine the methodology before it was put into the scope and approved. You know, the scope outline. We're happy to get on the phone again with, with that group to, to go through these comments. And that's all seven of them that are under that subheading in the memo. We're happy to get on the phone again with, with that group to go through these comments. And that's all seven of them that are under that subheading in the memo. Okay. Next topic was community services, and we really just had one critical comment there, and it's, you know, up in the front of the, of the analysis, which is basically page one hundred, it's just common eighty-one, which is page one hundred of the report. An introductory statement would be helpful about, because right now you show the service providers that on a map and you list them, right, the, the police, fire, EMS that serve the town. Just be helpful to show which of these providers, who is, who is right now actively serving the Boscabel operation for the festival, right? And it seems that based on correspondence you've, you have in the report after that, that you've gotten a lot of feedback from those folks, and so far it seems like they're, they're not concerned. It's just not clear who, what exactly are the providers that are going to be serving this site? Are they, are they the ones that serve Boscabel, or there's a new firehouse or a new department that's going to be different from the Boscabel? That's all that question's about. Wasn't clear.
Clarify that.
Sure. Okay, and then the last group was the human health site assessment, and this was a lot of material. It was the first time that we've looked at the detailed phase one and phase two investigations for the property, which we asked for and scope called for due to the site being a golf course with, you know, potential for shallow contamination and other things. So all of the, it's comments ninety, ninety-one, and ninety-two. Those are the big initial review, substantive review from our, you know, our site assessment group on that. And Paul, we, like I said, we would happy to have, connect Brian with you and walk through those. He's not on tonight, and I'm not really going to go through each one.
That'd be great.
That was really, that's, so that, it's ran through all of the, what we call the critical path comments. We want to be able to see answers to these to really be in a good position to move forward with, you know, determination on this.
Thank you. We're, the team will certainly put together a response to all ninety-three, highlighting the responses to the points that you've mentioned, Aaron, and, and Chris, appreciate it.
And what I'd like to do is, while I spend a couple of days figuring out what it's going to take, and we can, what I like to do is this, so I want to just schedule something that have to change it. I'd like to suggest that we take another good chunk of time in the next board meeting, whatever you need, and then based upon where you are, we can then schedule a dedicated meeting after that, if need be, which I assume will be needed. But you've got to get time to digest all this stuff.
I mean, I think if we have three, two more meetings before November, then that would probably enable you to set your public meeting after that. And I, I think that would be in keeping what we have in mind, if we had an October meeting and a special meeting.
Yeah, please take the comments, because again, for this board requires to have a substantive conversation on each section. We need not only the materials, which we have virtually everything or most things, but we also need AKRF to have the time to assess and provide us their viewpoint about the impact of each thing. So I need to rely upon them to have what they need to have those views. Don't want to do is have a board have a debate on each topic, and AKRF say they're not ready yet to opine about whether there's a significant adverse impact for each area. Until they have what they need, we can't do that part of the conversation. So again, as I said at the beginning of this, we have a completeness or sufficiency question, which we addressed today, and you've got the feedback. And then what, then once we have that done, we can then start going in sequence by section, chapter, or whatever you want to call it, a significant adverse impact or not discussion, an opinion discussion, if you will.
Well, I think whenever the, the special meeting is scheduled, we'll take AKRF up on their generous offer to have the breakout meetings of the different disciplines.
You guys can meet with them separately to go through whatever things you need. You don't need the board to do that. That, that you can do to get them, again, to get what AKRF needs for them then to come up with a recommendation by area for us. Because there are consultants, we need them to have what they need. And at this point, it sounds like, and you've heard, while there's an extraordinary volume of commentary and thoughtfulness, and we appreciate that, they have certain things they still need to be able to write that work they need to do to give us their viewpoint on each area.
No question, we have it.
Okay. All right, other things, board members?
One question.
Kim, please.
Okay. Well, I have two questions. So it says there are going to be thirty employees for HBSF onsite at any given time. That seems a little low to me, so. You know, given that you're going to have all these people directing traffic. Would request that. Don, can I just raise?
Kim, could you repeat the question you were breaking up?
You broke up quite a bit.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, so on page thirteen, somewhere in this giant thing, it says that it's estimating the number of employees that are going to be on site at any given time for HBSF. This isn't for the, you know, the restaurant or whatever. And it says thirty, and that includes the artists. And it just seems like a low number, given the traffic, the potential traffic direction.
I, I'll check, but I think I can answer that right now. My understanding from memory is the number is closer to sixty or is sixty, but thirty of them will be living onsite and thirty of them will be driving. So that's, that's how I recall I have it. And then so the, the people who are living onsite, we did a calculation for how many parked cars they would have, but they would not be driving during busy times. And then the, the employees that would be living offsite, we had a different calculation for their parking and their driving, but I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, so if that's the case, then if you could make that clear, just because that number seems wrong when you're
Yep.
true, and, yeah.
Yep.
And then the other thing, question I have is, is just a code thing. It says that the tent's going to be thirty feet with a thirty-five foot mast, and I, I'm just wondering, is, is forty? I can never remember this number, forty feet the, the height limit for us? Steve, Ron, Glenn.
I'd have to look it up, but thirty-five or forty, but I believe that masts are, are exempt from that.
Okay. Good, that's just, just so I understand what I'm looking.
Forty feet for buildings, but I don't know if masts are exempt or not.
I have to check too, but I believe it is.
Okay. So, you know, if you could just let us know next time.
Okay.
And that's, you know, AKRF did a great job here, so they asked about many of them. Thank you.
Other board members, other questions or comments? Okay. Ron or Steve, any, any parting comments?
You've made good progress. You know, the ball, I think, is now in, you know, Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, Garrison Goff's port. And we'll, we'll move forward from there. I like that they break out sessions. I think it's going to help the planning board meetings move forward much more smoothly.
Yeah, I think, I think the board has heard the significant issues that we've identified. Really just a matter to try to advance that to some finality.
Ron or Aaron or Chris, anything else you want to say? Okay. All right, Aaron, Chris, Ron, thank you for your, your, your writing of all ninety-three items. I feel like that's Martin Luther would have been proud of you. Thank you, Dan, for laughing, and all. We'll move on to another Hudson project.
Well, one last thing, Mr. Chairman. Would you be reaching out to me once you figure out the date for an additional meeting, if that's the way you want to go?
Well, again, I'm not sure we're going to do one. I'm not sure I'm going to schedule one right now. I think we are trying, you have to come back to these guys a few days, but I think we probably need to then get back together as a board. So my guess is we will be we'll be having the normal October meeting, and then we'll schedule one after that to have another meeting then, in between that and the November meeting. That'll be the plan, I think. I don't, I don't think that we can schedule without being together as a board.
Okay, whatever, just keep us posted, we'll, we'll comply.
You, you are the second or the third person on our, our call list, right after Cheryl and Ron or Steve.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Hudson Highlands Reserve.
Thank you.
Neil, can we take a couple-minute break to get a glass of water?
We absolutely can. One-minute break for Kim to get some water. We'll start in, we'll start, have it ninety seconds. I'll give everyone ninety seconds. All right, ninety seconds it is. All right, here we go. Feeling like we're down to one minute now. All right. Okay, everyone back?
Thank you, Neil.
No, you're welcome. Absolutely. That was probably a very standing apologies. Okay, it is nine eleven. As I had said to the, to our, to our, our node in Santelis, it's unclear if we're going to get to you. We're going to try, but if we do not, we will put you first up on the next meeting. That's the unfortunate thing about a very busy agenda for very large projects. So apologies, but that is what I did signal ahead of time. Okay, Hudson Highlands Reserve. Ron or Steve, would you like to just take us out to begin where we're going to begin?
Yeah, I think the board remembers back in two thousand nineteen, the DEIS was accepted, public hearing was held. Comments from the public and the board were presented to the applicant. And this FEIS has been filed in an effort to respond to all those comments. That's, that's the obligation of the FEIS, to satisfactorily respond to all comments raised. The process at this point is for the board to determine the adequacy of those responses, and then to move the project process forward, ultimately leading to a, the development of a finding statement, which would conclude the secret process and determine whether the process or the project will move forward or not. AKRF and I have been through the document initially. Again, you have a very lengthy comment memorandum. And AKRF can summarize to the extent they wish the status that we're at in this process.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board.
Just, just, Mr. Aurora Cole, please. Just, Mr. Gabba, are there anything else you want to add to that?
Oh, I, I think Ron touched on where we are procedurally. I don't think he really got into substantively where we are with the FEIS. In terms of timeframes, the way that secret regulations lay out the process is that within forty-five days of closing the public hearing or sixty days after the DEIS is submitted, whichever is later, the FEIS is supposed to be submitted and acted upon. Acted upon may mean that you reject it as being incomplete. That forty-five day period can be extended if you don't want to reject it, if it's necessary for more information or if there's problems or changes to the project. That's pretty much where you are at this point procedurally. At some point, and Ron and AKRF can speak substantively as to where you are in terms of adopting the FEIS, you're going to adopt the FEIS. It will address all the comments raised at the public hearing and, and address them substantively. After that, there is a ten-day period for additional public comments. Now, these are not public comments that need to be responded to in the FEIS. It's just additional things for the board to consent, and so inclined. And then within thirty days of accepting the FEIS, you're required to come up with a finding statement. That timeframe can be extended upon consent of the applicant, but other than that, you're required to come up with your finding statement. And the way the finding statement works is that AKRF and Miss Gaynor, and the extent I can be involved myself, will help draft a document which, you know, makes a determination of all the potential significant adverse environmental impacts have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable or not. Or if they could be minimized, mitigated, if some conditions on the project were imposed or the like. And that's going to be when you adopt that, the end of the secret process. So that's, that's where we are procedurally, substantive aspects I defer to Ron and AKR.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions of Steve or Ron at this point?
Neil, can I? Yeah, I just, I wondered if I could just make a very quick statement. I just wanted to note for, make note that I made a public comment as a member of the public at the public hearing. And I wanted to make it clear for the record that I'm keeping an open mind and I can fairly and impartially process the application. I have an entirely open mind. And so I wanted to make, just make that note on the record before we start discussion of the project.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Heidi. Okay, so our plan tonight is to hear from AKRF, Chris and Aaron, with Ron's input on the completeness of the, the FEIS. That is the, that's the purpose of tonight, and that is not to suggest that the applicant did not provide us a blue list, and I'm sure a very thoughtful amount of data in this document. The purpose is, as I stated in the previous application, it is, so it is complete, and therefore AKRF and Ron can provide us their opinion as we deliberate as to where we will stand in said findings document. So the purpose of tonight is to hear what is, what are, what are the things that are either not clear or omitted to help AKRF, and for that matter, this board, make a determination for that finding statement. That would be the purpose of this completeness. So that's the purpose of that. Mr. Aurora, looks like you want to say something. So go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. What I, I was just going to encapsulate what I thought might be the salient points in terms of, of, of the application itself. And then obviously acknowledged receipt of the comments we've received. And we thank them, thank the consultants for that, and we will be responding. But I think, you know, I, I'd just like to put this in, in the framework of, of where we are, because I know some of the board members are new and where we were and where we are. And, and the bottom line is this, that as, as everyone does know, we have two hundred and ten acres, we're proposing twenty-five homes to be located on the two hundred and ten acres. And as examined in the FEIS, the property owner has modified the proposed development to eliminate the Equestrian Center. And the Equestrian Center, as we all acknowledge, having gone through the process, was sparked the most controversy and concern. And by its elimination, we believe that that has mitigated substantially what were many of the issues that were raised previously. In addition to that, you know, there's been a removal of two homes around Olmert Pond. And we've significantly reduced the level, in our opinion, of, of the potential adverse environmental impacts occasioned by the elimination mitigation that I just described. Obviously, with that, the site disturbance has decreased by over seven acres. The impervious surface has decreased by over three acres. The total excavation has dropped significantly, as has the water demand. So, you know, it's within that context that, and that is obviously one of the positive outcomes that comes through the environmental review process as you go through the DEIS into the FEIS process. As far as the comments that are concerned, we have them. We will be addressing them. We intend to do that, we hope, in an expeditious fashion, and, and to be back before the board with, with our revised FEIS incorporating the comments. So I know there was a hard start and a hard stop for the water break when you put on the meter, and I recognize what you have in terms of your And I recognize what you have in terms of your agenda and, and the lateness of the hour, but insofar as where you want to go with it from here. That's where I am and, and where our team is in terms of responsiveness. So.
Sure, I thought the water meter point, was that an analogy? I wasn't being funny, Heidi, I just didn't catch.
I didn't catch what you just said.
I said, I didn't get Mr. Aurora's water meter point. Maybe I misheard.
No, 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 no. What I was referring to was it was a hard start, a hard start and a hard stop. And I figured that what's going on now in terms of the lateness of the hour and, and what you just went through in terms of, of the, the analysis previously. And in an effort to be, you know, in good faith to cooperate with you, I was just trying to, I was saying I, I appreciate hard starts and hard stops. As a former, as a judge for twenty-seven years, believe me, I appreciate brevity. Anyway.
Let me, let me then ask, I guess it's a matter for both, for Steve, I'll start with. Steve, are we obliged to walk through the AKRF comments? Or is it sufficient for the public's sake? Or is it sufficient to have the memos submitted by Ron, Aaron, Chris, and for the applicant to say, yes, we got? What's your view?
Absolutely sufficient to do that. You're entitled to rely on your consultants. The documents are all public record. Anybody can review them. You don't have to spoon feed, you know, to go over the moral. Of course, you can if you want to. I mean, if, if it's helpful to the board to, you know, have it articulated that these are the findings and they don't want to just read the papers, you're, you're entitled to do that. But do you have to? No, you don't.
So I, I would suggest to the, oh, go ahead, Glenn, please.
I just got to suggest, I think in following Rick's comments, I think if we had the same invitation from AKRF with regard to the particular items in their memo, we could probably accomplish as much as going through the list.
Here's what, here's what I'd like to suggest. I think, I think my fellow board members did benefit from some of Aaron, not, I, I don't, not a Chris's matter, but from the, the discussion of the major thing. So I'll take a show of hands. Is it, would it be value of Aaron hit the most salient aspects of the FEIS that are need to be augmented? I'll use that term. Would that be helpful to the board for Aaron to run through? Yes, Kim, others all in favor of hearing the salient areas? Yes, okay, that's, that's a majority. So Aaron and Chris, would you mind just hitting it? You don't have to go through all, whatever the number is. This, this, this is, this document is almost sixty percent longer than the one for the Shakespeare. So if you wouldn't mind just hitting the major issues of things you'd like the applicant to work on, I think that would be helpful for the board to benefit also for what they should be, have eyes on.
Chris, you want to take the first step? Go ahead.
Sure. So thanks, Neil, and thanks to applicant team for the submission. So the, our, our comment letter is, is set up so that planning board can understand where the project has been and where it's going. Both Steve and Ron weighed in on that. But there is some detail in this document explaining sort of, you know, where we've been and where we're going with regard to the secret process. The next steps was regarding sort of the review of the FEIS, right? This document was prepared and, and submitted to you all and provided to the applicant team for their consideration. There are quite a few comments with regard to this project and the FEIS that was submitted. Up front, I think the, you know, general comment number one on this and the one that we think it might be most important with regard to the document itself. Is that the FEIS is the, the lead agency, this planning board's document, you own this, this is your document. You can request that the applicant's team prepare this document, which you have. But because it is the lead agency's of playing board's document, it has to be written in a, in a tone and in a voice that is the planning boards. And I think our first and probably most important comment was regard to this FEIS is that there are sections in this FEIS that are not written in that voice. It's not written in the planning board's tone. It's, it's it needs to be revised so that when the public reads it, when you adopt it. It is in fact a representation of, of the planning board and, and its take on this project. So I think of, of mo- most of our comments, that is probably the number one most important piece of this, right? The, the voice of this document needs to be revised. So that's less of a reaction and commentary and more of a response to comment that would, that the planning board would normally take. Planning board, any comments on that? Any thoughts and questions?
I just want to say thank you for that because that was you know, a problem I had with the document. That you know, that it's, it's full of editor.
Kim, you're, 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 at least for me, Kim, you were cutting in and out.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I must have really bad headphones here. I apologize. So I just wanted to say, I, I really appreciate that because I was not certain that this was our document, but the tone is certainly not the tone that we would use. And I thought that it was pointed out in lots of different instances, a way to make it more, you know, more of a a flat discussion and not an editorial. So I really appreciate that. Included that I haven't seen.
Other comments?
All right. So, so team goes through the, the document that we prepared, there are specific comments where we flagged this as an issue. But we'd like the, we'd like the applicant's team to go through sort of the entire document with that in mind. So we do have specific areas or specific comments or specific responses where we flag this, but I mean, it should really, it needs to apply to the entire document. So as you go through that, please keep that in mind. The, the, the next most important piece that we flagged and we think needs to be addressed has to do with, with coordination on, on the roadway, Route Nine and the DOT's involvement in this project. The planning board has not, if there has been recent coordination with DOT, if there's been discussions with them about curb cutter or how the traffic will be managed on the, on Route Nine. The planning board needs to be provided that information. So those, summary of those conversations. What the DOT's input has been and how that is, how those are going to be addressed by the applicants team.
You know, they don't issue a permanent for determination involved agency in the findings too. On the DEIS and there's a response, but it, it just wasn't clear what's been provided to the planning board to fill in the gaps and what's, what's been talked about with DOT between hearing and now it's been two years.
Any questions on that one? Okay. Moving on, one of the other items that we had flagged in the document or comments has to do with the provision of a stormwater pollution prevention plan. There is discussion about the, the plan, I think, as you go through these comments, you'll see we're looking for a little bit more information on the stormwater management on the project site. Okay. Natural resources issues that we flagged and that we are looking for additional information for. Right, there's, there are comments on specific flora and fauna. Responses were provided. Some of them we felt were, were adequate. Some of them we felt addressed the comments and the issues raised adequately. There were others that need some specific or more detailed information. So those are flagged. With regard to in particular fragmentation and perforation of forest. There's some, in our review, there's, there's some confusion as to and this, this has been a topic of conversation for a long time. There's some confusion as to whether or not or how this is, is being defined, how these impacts are being defined by the applicant's team. Right, there's the use of fragmentation and use of perforation. They are different. When you look at the definitions. So this, this, yeah, yeah, yes, needs to be clear as to, as to both, right? The definition of both and how this project is going to result in both fragmentation and, and perforation of forests. So I think with regard to looking at the development program and the loss of forest habitat. Those two items need some clarity. And we would be looking for the applicant's revision of the FEIS to go into more detail as to sort of what they're thinking with regard to each of those types of forest disturbance. Any questions on that one? No, okay. The you know, the, the issue with regard to wetlands. And the, so, so the planning board knows that there were several additional reports that were provided in support of this FEIS and, and they were in response to comments provided on the DEIS. So that information was incredibly helpful. One of those in particular was a Burno Pool report that was done. That, in our opinion, did a good job as documenting the assessment that was done on the project site. The, the that were made. There was raised a, an issue that had been brought up during the DEIS preparation process and as a comment of the DEIS. I'm going to ask to do with the hydrology and a couple areas out on the project site. There has been mention of a couple of seeps that are potential wetland areas. And we need some clarification on that. And the, the concern here is that the the, the sea barriers were not delineated as wetlands. We were told that they were small and not hydrologically connected. This Burno Pool report seems to indicate otherwise. So we need clarification on the regulatory aspect of those seeps and whether or not they really are hydrologically connected to the, to the delineated and regulated surface water resources that are on site. You okay with that? All right, those were the, those are the key topics that I had flagged. Obviously, there's a lot more in here. Ron, did you have anything specific that you wanted to talk about with regard to the, the comment letter that we provided?
Sure. I think on a very basic level, I think one thing we struggle with is just to be sure that all comments raised were clearly responded to in the overall document. So we've asked the applicant to annotate all, all letters, the public transcript and all. To identify the individual comments offered. And then provide a reference so we could find in the text where those responses are given. Would help us review it. It would also help the public, anybody that wishes to read it and to be assured that their comments have been understood and addressed. So that similarly is a significant issue for the applicant to address.
Right, and they did provide that to us just, you know, about five days ago or so. So we didn't have a chance to get through it all for this meeting. Plan to before the next appearance. And they did, you know, address what we asked for, which is basically going through the written comment letters that came in from the public plus the transcript of the hearing that happened two years ago. It's all in one record that the planning board actually released to the applicant right after the hearing was done. And the commentary, it was closed. But, and they produced this FEIS based on that, but they never really showed us how they picked some of the public comments. You know, usually it's indicated by like putting a circle around the comment and saying this is comment three point two and it's on page, whatever. We didn't see that, so we asked for that. They got it to us. They had to do a little work to catch up, but they did get that to us and we planned to review that to make sure everything was captured. What we have here is a substantive review of what they did respond to. We just didn't get to check the comments off. That's all.
And, and to add to that, a touch, as we go through the, the the annotated comments, both, both the, or, you know, all of the letters that were provided, including those the letters from AKRF, from Ron, from Hudson Islands Land Trust. The the letters from public and the, and the involved interested agencies as well as the transcript and email comments. We, we will be looking at each one of those. And if there are comments that we feel were not addressed, it should have been. We'll flag those for the, for the applicant's team and we'll let the planning board know.
Ken, anything else?
Well, that's it on our side.
So one, one thing I'll just say, which Cheryl just reminded me, I, I, I forgot to mention, and I think it deserves airing, that Max Garfinkel of the Conservation Board did send us a memo. Which Steve, I don't know if you saw, or Ron. But he did say that the Conservation Board had a desire to be engaged in our process for both Hudson Projects. Shakespeare and Reserve. Given changes. And I don't, I don't know if that memo has been shared publicly yet or put on our website. We should certainly provide a copy of the applicant here as well. Cheryl is tomorrow. The Shakespeare Festival folks, and I apologize for not recalling earlier. I don't know what that practically means. They, they suggested the memo asking for in fact maybe a joint meeting. I don't know if that means just we invite them to our next meeting. I don't know if Steve or Ron, you have a viewpoint about that. We have actually, I think once under, for the Hudson Holland here, if there was a, there was a working session with the Conservation Board five years ago. I can't even remember how many years ago it was. I have this vague recollection of Mike Leonard being at the meeting.
The Conservation Board being involved in this project early on when we were still mapping it out as a conservation subdivision. I, I'm really kind of at a loss as to what it is the CB wants to do at this point, but I mean, we're right at the tail end of secret review. I can't see any basis for joint meetings with them at this point, possibly after secret is concluded, or if they want to submit comments during the ten day post-acceptance, the FEIS comment period. But, um, I mean, you're just not at a point now where you could bring them in. Shakespeare Festival may be a little different. You're, you're still in the, the DEIS process. They're looking at the, the part three. Again, I don't know that I see a basis for a joint meeting, but if they want to have a, a couple of members come to a planning board meeting, a couple of planning board members go to a CB meeting, that would be fine. But on, on this one, I just don't know that there's a lot, lot to be done with Max's request.
So Steve, I'd ask you to receive the memo from, from Cheryl. And then if you wouldn't mind communicating with Max in whatever way is most appropriate to share your perspective on how they could be or should be engaged. If, uh, given the choices you provide. I, I, I think that's a, that will be useful next step.
Sure.
Okay, board members, Heidi, please.
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions. And me, and they might be related because it's hard in reading the comments. Sometimes I'm having trouble picturing what the site looked like in its prior iteration and what it looks like now. And it could be that those, um, I know something came across our email. I think earlier today, which might have, which looked like some plans. Maybe they were a comparison of where the houses would have, would have been under the prior iteration when there was an equestrian center on the site and what, where they are now. So we could kind of compare the proximity to the pond and that type of thing and where they're all, where each house would be located on the site relative to what it was, where it was before. But, um, and another question I have is what the access would be to the site because look, just, um, trying to skim through the transcript, it seemed like there were a lot more comments about traffic and about the have the ability of East Mountain Road to handle traffic and emergency vehicles. to handle traffic and emergency vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. And there's no traffic section in the AKRF, AKRF memo. So I wasn't sure if that's because, under the new plan, it's not, so, it's not that as much of an issue because the equestrian center is gone. So that's just not a flagged issue anymore? Or whether I'm missing it somehow where the, um, the traffic, how the traffic would, would be handled and whether there are issues with respect to traffic? And that's, I, I'm confused in reading over the draft FEIS as well as to, and I suppose this is going to be clarified when the DOT communications maybe are, are forwarded to us. But, um, why there's an alternative access? Like, does the applicant already know that the Route 9 accesses may not happen? Or, or why, or why, why? I, I, it would really be helpful to me to have a traffic section of the memo. You know, analyzing the traffic, I guess, and, and the access. Except maybe in lieu of it being, um, kind of part of other comments.
I, I can give a very brief response to that if you'd like.
That'd be great. That'd be great. I mean, I, I'd love to hear it.
Well, the major reason for the Route 9 entry was the equestrian center and the traffic that would be generated by that. And I believe some of the, the types of vehicles that would have to come up that were hauling horses up there in and out. So, and it was determined that the use of East Mountain Road would not be a practical use because of the work and the grading and everything that would have to be done and, and the impact on the local traffic. So East Mountain Road was never in the original plan. When the equestrian center went away, an awful lot of the perceived impacts, when, negative impacts went away with it, one of which was the, the traffic impact, which obviously didn't go away, but it was significantly reduced. So in our discussion, we were looking at the amount of work that we'd have to do to build the road up from Route 9. We weren't concerned to very much with the intersection itself, but with the road, the impact of the road that would have to be built up from Route 9. There are significant cuts. There's significant grading. If we were to use the alternate route, eliminate that route from Route 9, not because the DOT was against it, but because it would, it would be less physical impact on the ground. We could now substitute an entry from East Mountain Road, which would have less, which would have, have, have less cut, less fill, better grade. So we presented that as an alternate. And with the reason we didn't change that particular thing versus the other changes that we actually did make in the plan was to present both because there's a tipping point in that, in that discussion, which the town engineer and the town highway superintendent have, have stated they unequivocally, unequivocably that they don't want any traffic off of East Mountain Road or off, off of Horton Road. If you'll re, well, maybe you don't recall, but at the beginning of this thing, we, we, we talked about Horton Road as an access. And that was, that was immediately taken off the table. So what we presented there was an alternate onto East Mount Road, triggered by the fact that we would have less traffic and smaller vehicles and fewer vehicles. And we wanted to present that as an alternate that the planning board, and I believe that AKRF recognized that. And they said there was a choice presented to the planning board in that memo. So that's what that's all about. I do have, I do have a side by side of the, of, of the plan, if you want me to take another minute and, and show you that. You, is that a yes? Is that a, okay?
I would like to see it. I-
All right, I'm going to share my screen if that's all right. Yeah, this one. Why didn't that work? No way that didn't work. Let me start again. Let me stop. Let me start again and pick it again. All right, so what you, what you have here is, on the upper left of both maps, you have East Mountain Road North. On the lower right, you have Route 9. Just walk you in from the entry. And the, the major change was, on the right side is the original plan where you have, where my cursor is now floating over the equestrian center and the, and the, and the parking associated with it. I'll show you this cul-de-sac here, which is a rather long cul-de-sac that goes up behind the, on the uphill side of the historic road. When the equestrian center went away, we took, we shortened that road and we moved some of the houses over, over to that. We also shortened the cul-de-sac and shortened the road. This is a, a flat area. I happen to know that you'll get a comment as to why we put it there, but we put it there because that's been disturbed. In the past, it's, it's scummy second growth. It's not a lot of forest. So that was one of the major changes. I don't know how to move this thing over. I guess I can just move it over here. If you go, the, 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 just, the lack of connectivity around the pond. If you go over here, you see that there was a fragmentation. And that's, that's not the scientific term. There was a segregation of, of a portion of the, this green area over here was not connected to the green area over here because this cul-de-sac went, was, was, was breaking that possible connection up. If you come to the new plan, the cul-de-sac was shortened. There was a lot of talk about the, the, this, this cul-de-sac and the two houses here interfering with migration of, of animals and, and, and the connectivity of, of the, the animals coming across, coming through the property. So what that, what we did was shorten that, shorten that cul-de-sac, reduce, open this area up so that we had a, a, a complete corridor and we had a connection in the entire area. So you had a, an increase of, I'm going to say it's about, um, let's see. You mentioned it before. I've forgotten the number, but there's been, I guess it was seven acres of, of less disturbance. The, the area that is proposed for conservation easement has grown. So all this dark green, plus the, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. All the dark green and the, and the, and the, and the water, the, this, the stream coming down the hill, the pond, that's all the conservation easement. It's a contiguous unit. So those are the major changes. Obviously, the most major change is the, is the equestrian center having been taken off of the plan.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks very much.
I'll just add something for Heidi's benefit too. Back when, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody on the applicant team. But back when this was scoped for the EIS, traffic actually wasn't part of the DEIS effort because as part of the EAF, which ended in a POSDEC, traffic wasn't one of the key items that determined to have a significant, a potential for significant adverse impacts. It's kind of was handled at the EAF stage with a traffic study that was done, I think by Kimberly Horn, the same consultant that did Shakespeare, if I recall.
That's right.
Yeah, so they, they actually, that was reviewed by the town in detail before the POSDEC. Traffic is not part of the record for that reason. But there's still a DOT permit needed for access on Route 9, and they're an involved agency for that. And they like to look at the traffic study, and I believe they did, but they still have other, other comments that need to be addressed to get the permit. And since they're an involved agency on SECR, you know, it's good to make sure the applicant satisfies those needs so that they can issue positive findings when they have to issue a permit.
I have a question here. So I assume that's because they were planning to use Route 9. But shifting the potential to be East Mountain Road North, you know, doesn't that change everything in a way?
I mean, our memo kind of says that that would warrant a definite look because that, you know, that wasn't part of the plan originally, right? Route 9 was the access from the beginning, right?
Right.
The path to the EAF stage was from a Route 9 access, not an East Mountain North access. So something that wants to be considered by the board as a, as a new access point, we are, you know, memo kind of alludes to that should be studied and we should see what that means for traffic because I don't think that's been shown at all.
And I also think that that's going to have a big impact on, you know, the public weighing in during the public hearing, weighing in on Route 9. I, I am certain that coming out onto East Mountain North is going to be something that the public will not, you know, react to in a positive way. Also, on page 46, it says they're adding 25 homes. It's only going to add 26 cars, and I find that hard. So it seems, you know, those are just my additional comment.
The applicant responds to that, but I think, you know, even with the equestrian center in the project, it, it got through the EAF stage. That's my understanding, so.
If I may, by way of response, the scope was developed by the planning board, not by us. It's the, just as the FEIS is your document, the scoping for the, for the DEIS was, was adopted and vetted by the planning board. So that was not our choice. That was the planning board's choice.
No, but it's your choice to change the access. East Mountain North because-
No, 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 no. Forgive me. I don't mean to interrupt, but we're not changing it. What we're suggesting is that as part of the review process, in light of what we've decided to do by way of mitigation, by eliminating, by eliminating the equestrian center and the traffic attendant to that and the trucks that, that, that transport the horses. You know, that was something that we presented to the planning board as a mitigation measure. And as part of that, the planning board certainly can take a look at that, should recognize the mitigating measure that it is. And with that, it's up to the planning board to decide what the access should be.
Guys, the, the goal tonight, just to, I, I, because we're mixing sort of the two buckets I was describing earlier for Shakespeare. And it's fine. It's important for our discovery process. But what, right now, our purpose of this evening is to provide a sense of, is this a complete FEIS? Not that we agree with it, but is it complete? Which will now, that's the completeness or sufficiency. That will allow us, when AKRF has a chance to have all they need for them to provide their opinions to us and also develop our own opinions. And then we can then direct them to write a finding statement, which will then state for each of the areas, whether we think this is permissible under SECR or not, which is what we have to do. These are fine questions. I just want to make clear what we have to do this evening. So let me, let me pause. Other thoughts from board members on their topic, I guess, but most primarily on the sufficiency of the FEIS? Going once, going twice. Now, one last thing I'll say. Steve, there was a question put in the, I thought the chat, they called the Q and A, that Mr. Regley was asking whether he can talk. I assume he was referring to Hudson Highlands Reserve, not Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, which is where it's in his letter too. Can you just, from getting our earlier discussion, you just remind the public about where we are in this process and therefore what the role or not role of public comment will be in our determination of SECR for Hudson Highlands Reserve?
The hearing has been closed. All public here, comments have been received. The applicant is now endeavoring to respond to all of those public comments. Once the FEIS is deemed complete by the board and accepted, there'll be a 10-day comment period, which additional comments may be made by the public and considered by the board that will not require any further response from the applicant. It's just to inform the board's attention as, as to matters which maybe hadn't been considered or, or have been considered and they, they have a different take on them. That's pretty much the extent of public comment at this time. If there's some special reason that you feel you need to have someone comment on something that's, you know, just, again, not part of the, the SECR process, you know, you have discretion to, you know, on rare instances, allow one person or, you know, or another to, to say something or, you know, but, but really it's confined to that 10-day period and, and the board shouldn't be accepting comments from the public when there's not a, when the public hearing's been closed.
If you know, I don't know if you heard all that, but if you did, you can say something in the Q and A. If not, you know, it's out there in the ether somewhere, but that's where we are. Okay, other comments before we, we move on?
Chair Zuckerman, I just wanted to respond to something that Glenn had mentioned earlier and to the applicant's team. Yes, we'll be available to have a call or calls to run through specific details, to run through the comment letter in its entirety, whatever is needed, as long as the, as long as the planning board is okay with this, whatever is needed to, to sort of help you through understanding what it is that's been asked and, and making revisions to the document. So as we did with Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, yes, we'll, we'll be available for, to consult with you on, on the comments or whatever else, whatever questions you might have that resulted from them.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So, all right. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, AKRF and Glenn and Drew Gamelis, who I don't know who you are, but thank you. She's the note taker. I've been, we all had that job at once, Drew. Okay, so, um, oh, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one point of clarification here. So we've got this FEIS in our hands at this point. And just like the Shakespeare Festival, AKRF has responded to the responses to the comments that came from the public. So we're going to be getting another draft of this with, with clarifications from AKRF queries. Or is this, we're getting another draft here, but this is not the final.
We, we've been, we've been through AKRF's memo. Rick went through it. I went through it. We chatted about it. They recognized the vast majority of the, of the comments are in some measure valid. And so we intend to edit that FEIS to incorporate those suggestions. Perhaps during our discussion, we'll change their mind on a couple of them, but by and large, we will incorporate those things and we will produce a new, another version of the FEIS for your final consideration.
Okay, exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you, Glenn.
Great. Good question, Peter. All right, so board members, it is now 10 o'clock. We've been at this for two and a half hours. I, I am one to believe that we have reached our capacity for problem solving at this point. And I did, and it doesn't provide that much comfort. But I did provide the applicant clarity at least a week ago, saying the chance of us getting to them, we're going to be slammed, given where they were in the agenda. A show of hands for us to conclude this evening's fun and allow the RNO application to be first up next month. Or so, all for, for, for closing out the night, raise your hand, given your level of energy. Okay, that is the majority of the board. So I'm going to then call for a motion to adjourn and unless Steve or Ron have other things they want to attend to at this point. Okay, so Cheryl, with our apologies to the applicant who was remaining our new business, we will put them at the top of our agenda for the October meeting. And I don't know if they or their, their representatives are available or on this call and can hear me say that. We apologize. I apologize. But this is the nature of very low interest rates and a lot of excitement to build in Phillips Town. So that is our plan. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Kim. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any commentary? Any other departing comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Have a good night. All in favor, say aye, aye.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Thank you.